How is that with the board? Well, first of all, thank everybody for coming. Why don't you say something? And I assume, you know, this is, you've read through the draft and might have some comments.
Yeah, I have a fair number of comments. Some of them are just wording comments. Do you want that tonight, or should I email this to you?
No, it's gotta be tonight because we're up against time constraints.
Okay. Should I just launch in? I don't wanna like...
John, can, before we start on that, what are we doing with these comments that we got from the town attorney? Do those end up being coming the draft that was...
Yeah, I mean, I think we're working, we're gonna be working from that.
That's what is on the website.
It's not on the website. It's what I sent to the board to review.
So, public hasn't seen it?
No, public's not seen those.
Okay. So...
I mean, they're pretty mundane.
I mean, the board hasn't accepted them, but it really...
Right, right. Okay. So, Mark, why don't you go ahead and take it from there?
Okay. And if, you know, if this goes on too long and other people wanna jump in, please do. So, I guess on page one and extending into page two, when you're defining the solar energy systems by size, you mentioned the footprint area is measured by totaling the land area occupied by all of the components of the solar collection system? And I guess I would maybe suggest changing solar collection system to solar energy system, since the collection system is not defined anywhere and the collection system is really just one part of the total system.
Okay. Does that sound good to everybody?
I was just worried, does that include like the lines to the grid then?
So, John, let me, as a procedural thing, maybe what we should do is simply accept these comments that come in from the public, write them down, obviously if there are questions to be asked, I mean, does it, would it include the footprint of the lines? Rather than having the board decide what we do.
Well, David, could you review again the timing for when we need to...
So, I assume if you accept all of the changes from the lawyers, that that's going to trigger a second public hearing.
Right.
It has to be noticed after 14 clear days, which means not counting today or the day of the hearing. So, we're looking at 16 days out, which I believe is going to put us, you know, 27th?
And do we have, do we have time for another meeting after that?
Yes. So, anytime after the 27th, so I would think that next, the following week is going to be the 29th, 30th, 31st, and then the first.
Okay, John, it's all right, go ahead.
So, sometime in that week, I would suggest that the board make an extra meeting to have that public hearing.
Okay, so we need an extra meeting.
Yeah.
Cause our, when's our next meeting?
The next meeting is on the 25th.
Oh, so that doesn't give us that time.
Right, it's not gonna give us the 14 clear days.
All right. So, we need to schedule that extra meeting. So, we can take comment, we do have time to take comments?
Yep.
And still... So, if we take comments and then we have that next meeting, we'll have time after that meeting to...
You really should make those, all the changes tonight?
That's what I'm...
And then have that out for public review during that 14-day period.
Because we're not gonna have that, that...
A meeting on the 25th is gonna be too late to...
Too late.
For people to be able to review.
Yeah, all right. So, we've cleared that up. We have to make the changes. Any changes that we make, we have to make tonight.
Okay. Then let me modify my suggestion.
Yes.
Let's take all the comments from everybody and then we can say, these are the things we wanna talk about.
Wanna consider. I think that's a good idea. All right. So, we've gotten all the way to your first comment. Okay, so you would like collection to be energy? Is that right?
Yeah, so it seems like you've defined things as solar energy systems, yet when you're breaking it out by size, you refer to components of the solar collection system. And I guess when I think about a solar system, I think of the collection system as just consisting of the panels or the modules. You know, the inverter is not part of the collection system. That's a conversion type thing, so...
Okay. Okay, keep on going.
Right. So, for medium and large systems, you have included the land area between the rows of panels as part of the area? And I guess my question is, what if there's a dual use there? Like, what if that land between rows is being farmed? If you're growing crops or hay or something like that, does that change things at all?
Well, we can discuss that, but I mean, speaking for myself, I don't think that would change it because even if it's a dual use, it's being used as part of the system.
Well, I mean, the question is, if you had one or several panels over here and then a bunch of farmland and then one or several panels over here, what, we wanna make sure that that's...
Well, that would be, that sounds like two different areas.
Yes, and I would think that we would want the, wanted to say, add up this area here plus this area here is the total and the cornfield in between is not.
So, let's read what it actually says. This footprint area is measured by totaling the land area occupied by all of the components of the solar system included, blah, blah, blah. So, if you had land that was occupied by solar system?
Right.
That was split into two parts?
Right.
And there was a discrete...
It was farmland or your house or...
Right. I would imagine that you would exclude that. Would you?
I wouldn't.
Well, there's this one other line. The footprint also includes the land area between the components of the system.
And...
Right.
And this is where... That's the catch.
Right. So, I mean, I think, I think it's entirely reasonable as long as it's, as long as we are clear that the farmland or the house between the two sections, the two areas is not included in that land area, right?
I don't think that's clear.
Okay.
Because I think you'd have to have a, you'd have to define how far apart they would be to trigger that.
Yeah. So, we should just note that...
Let's note that we're just gonna keep going.
Yeah, let's note that we wanna clarify the land area in between.
Mark, absent a situation where you have two discrete areas that are widely separated, that are being, you know, with two separate solar things, has it been your experience or have you seen systems where people are put in rows of solar and then farming between the rows or doing something with the land, you know, with the 10 or 20 feet between the rows of panels? Yeah, so the industry is moving in that direction. It's called agrivoltaics, you know, combination agricultural and photovoltaics. And there's a lot of experimentation with what types of crops work best in between rows, normally spaced rows. So, I think, you know, in the future, it's likely to become much more common. Right now, you already see people haying in between, you know, between rows.
Yeah, they have to be pretty far apart to get equipment in there.
Yeah.
It has to be really, I mean, it has to be as wide as this room or wider to get equipment in there, so...
Potentially, yeah, I mean...
Just, I mean, have you seen any of these installations that were, that are like that? Are there photographs to show us what it looks like?
Oh, yeah, I've seen plenty, I can dig up plenty of pictures. And there may be some in Vermont already, but I know there's a lot of experimentation going on in Europe and in Colorado and places like that.
Cause, you know, the balance we're striking here is trying to be, looking at the size of the total area and how, you know, how potentially offensive it is to whoever looks at it. I'm not sure it's changed that much if there's, if there's wider rows, if it still encompasses the same amount of acreage.
I guess to me, it's just a question of like, you know, would you consider that a farm that has some solar? Or would you consider it a solar thing that has some agriculture? And I don't know if you regulate them differently in either situation.
All right, we'll keep on going.
Should I go to my next one?
Yeah.
Okay, so my next one, at the, at the end of the section on, this is on page two, where you, you finish defining different types of systems by size. You have a paragraph or a sentence that says, "The measurement of cumulative footprint does not include access roads." And, and I guess I would just note that in some cases, access roads extend into the solar array? And so, does that mean in that case, you're not counting the access road as part of the total area? So, you, I guess my point is, you might need a little more clarity there in terms of what exactly...
So, where is this exactly?
The rest, the calculation of size of the solar.
Like the middle of page two.
I think what we meant was where the access road starts at the edge of the area.
Right.
I think that's what we meant, so...
Yeah.
Maybe we can clarify.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. And onward and upward?
Okay, so I was gonna skip to the end of, or no, to the top of page four. And again, if anyone else wants to jump in and interrupt me, please do, cause I've got a number of comments here. So, top of page four, so this is 14.50. You talk about how group net metered solar energy systems shall require a conditional use permit? And I guess I would just point out that there are some rooftop systems in line that are group net metering already? And to require those types of systems to seek a conditional use permit just seems overly burdensome?
Right, yeah, I agree. I think...
And so, maybe you could just add a qualifier like ground-mounted group net metered systems or something like that?
Well, one thing that's gonna come up tonight is we had legal, actually, she said, "So, if I have a roof-mounted system on my house and I sell back the energy, I don't, I don't use the grid, do I need a CP?" But I think we're, you know, that's something we're gonna have to revisit.
Well, the group is the key word there. So, if this person is an individual and they sell back the energy, that's net metered, but it's not group net metered.
Yeah. Yeah, it's individually net metered, what you're saying. Well...
So, we're only applying this to group net metered?
So, I'd like to jump...
Well, I was just gonna, in response to that, there are some situations where people have like a detached garage or something and they'll put the solar on their garage, but most of their load is coming from their house and so they'll actually group net meter from their garage to their house. So, that's technically...
But you could have either, right? You could have an individual net metered or a group net metered.
Well, in some cases, the only way to get the financial credit for your solar is to go through, you know, quote unquote, a group net metering situation.
So, you mean they have two different accounts?
Yeah, they have like electricity accounts, for example, yeah.
Two different meters?
Yeah.
Oh.
So...
So, that's complicated. Didn't know that first.
This, this thing has been...
A discovery.
Just what you might call a nightmare. But anyway, be that as it may, we're at 14.5. So, I'd like to bring, you know, this is a discussion we've had about the group net metered solar energy system. The reason we have this in here is because the feedback on the survey was very strongly in favor of energy produced in line, staying in line, not necessarily the actual literal energy, but some way to, to do that. So, that's why we have this group net metering section in here. And we were discussing this last time. And so, I think this is something the board needs to consider. Do we want to... It's challenging this group net metered on a practical level despite the survey. It's gonna be quite a challenge to... If you go down to 14.60C, we have medium and large solarers which may be allowed only if at least 60% of the power generated by each SES will be sold for use of net properties in line. So, and, and she says, "I'm not sure there's a way to enforce this." I mean, I think there is a way to enforce it, but I just don't know how practical it is and whether, whether we're, we're just getting, we're making mistakes. So, what are people's thoughts?
Well, I, I was just gonna say, I've, I thought about this after the last meeting a lot and I, I really changed my mind. I think it's gonna be too hard to, you know, just too hard to do it. I don't think we should.
So, John...
Even though, even though the questionnaire, you know, people said that.
I guess I take the contrary position. I, I think that could, once you get into these bigger systems, there's a lot more reporting and information that's going back and forth between the power company and it seems to me that that information would be available. I think once, you know, five or 10 years down the road, it's probably like everything else, things may slip through the cracks, but at least the intent would be...
The initial...
The initial, because we're allowing a megawatt of power or more. So, I mean, that's, you know, multi-million dollar project. So, I don't see why we can't, I won't do it.
We'll give it...
As a point of order, I really would like to hear everything from all, all the people that are, that are here before we begin deliberating specific questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Rich.
So, keep going.
Okay, let me first ask, anyone else wanna jump in here? I don't wanna dump any...
One other quick point on that one. On the group energy one, note that it says lot, not meter. So, it's tied to the, it may be group and it says that anything that's off the lot where it's located. So, you were talking about multiple meters. If it's on the same lot, probably doesn't matter cause it says lot in the language.
Yeah, my solution was just gonna be put in involving multiple residences, but lot, you're right, it's already in there. It's sufficient, right?
And I'll, I'll put this out as a question to you as well, which is community energy systems. That there's a whole, there's a whole set of definitions that different states deal with it where it's, it's community-owned and we haven't, don't even address that really here. There's group, which would be maybe three neighbors or five neighbors or something. But community energy has become very popular and, and a great way to fund a five or 10 megawatt project where everybody in town basically owns a piece of it. And I know there's another group that's been talking about kind of community systems, but it specifically relates to solar and wind. I've seen it with wind as well. But I just throw that out there cause I don't know whether that has been part of the discussion at all. And it's sort of conspicuously absent from the...
It has been part of the discussion that because it is run by the municipality, it is not subject to the zoning ordinance.
Right.
So, it's basically been ignored because it will ignore the ordinance.
And David, does that mean that we, that you could actually do like a five-megawatt system in line? If it's total municipal?
Yeah, because if it's totally municipal, the, the, any governmental agency that does a project does not have to adhere to the zoning ordinance.
Maine and New Hampshire both have pretty good incentive programs. New Hampshire, I mean, Maine and Vermont. New Hampshire's is sort of like...
Okay.
I'm a little concerned, well, I'm, major concern is this issue of clear cuts that was mentioned in an email that came around the town today. And as an owner of 170 acres in this, more or less in the middle of lime, which is hard to inspect it unless you're on the ground. And knowing that all of, or most of this, at one time had sheep on it. There's certainly plenty of stone walls there. And the early pictures of the town show a very different amount of forest. It seems to me that having the, not being able to put a solar installation on an area that's been clear cut doesn't make a whole lot of sense in, in my property. And that there are no, where this might go, it would have to be on land that is currently not subject to conservation easement, more or less. And that people wouldn't be able to see it unless they walked on the property. And why, why bind this in a situation where we couldn't do a clear cut in a place that clearly had been farmed at one time?
I think, right, you could do a clear cut, but then you'd have to wait for it now. You'd have to just wait five years to put the gray in. So, I don't know whether it does make sense or not.
So, the, anyway, the reasoning was, is a question also on a survey, like the group net meter. Group net, the group, or the idea of most, or most or all the energy standing in line. This was about clear cutting trees. This was the second most popular answer. So, you know, we're trying, we spent a year on this survey and we're trying to follow what the town wanted and it's really difficult because some things don't seem so practical when you break them up at that way. But that, those are the responses that we got. So, it's difficult to ignore these popular answers because, you know, as we're reading through it and, and, you know, as I read through it and thinking of it as a unified amendment, I have different opinions than I did when I was just looking at the things separately. So, that's something we, what we can revisit again.
Can I tell, it was my understanding that if you, if an applicant comes in and wants to clear cut a property for the purposes of putting in a solar installation, that would be reviewed and that would be allowable. What I think we're trying to prevent is somebody clear cutting their property and then saying, "Okay, here is my seven acre that I want you to accept as a solar site. And we would like to be able to have the opportunity to review that and not have denuded seven acre or large parcel of land kind of shoved down our throats and say, 'Well, it's already cut. I can't put the trees back on it, so now you want me to cut an additional X number of acres.'" So, I don't think this in any way, it was my impression, the way it's written, that it, that it does not preclude cutting for a solar system. It's just you have to be in the application process before you do it.
Okay, well, I...
Chairman, I would ask that we keep taking input and we'll, we'll talk about these things.
Yeah, so let's do that. All right. So, next, yes?
I would just like to touch on that comment. So, really what you're saying is, even though the bylaw or ordinance, whatever we call it, says you cannot put solar on land that's been clear cut in the last five years, that's not a blanket denial of the right to do it. It just means that that is something you have to get...
I'm not sure about that. I think we can bring that out when, I mean, Rich, what's the... Let's come back to this when we get to, and we'll, and we'll get to more clarity about it.
Okay. So, Tom, do you have any thoughts about whether a prohibition on clear cutting and having to wait five years? Do you have thoughts whether that would be a good or a bad thing?
If it's a blanket prohibition, I don't, no, I don't think it's a good thing.
Okay.
I mean, you know, here's Ross telling us, here's this place out here where no one's gonna be offended by seeing it and it's going to generate electricity and he would like to, I believe what Ross is saying is he would like to at least have the option of clear cutting and not having to wait five years. And if your board is open to approving such a, such a plan, then that's different than saying, "No, absolutely can't do it."
Okay. More comments?
Well, I had one other.
Sure.
There was, there was mention just moments ago about trying to balance people's desire to, you know, approval of having solar collectors in town versus offending them by having them what they conceive of. Do you, did you actually hear from a lot of people who said, "Yes, I'm all for solar. It's great to have renewable resources, I just don't wanna look at it"?
Well, there's certainly some.
Did you hear a lot of that?
There's certainly some, yeah.
Did you take it seriously from those people?
Of course. That's a whole other...
How can you?
I'm with you on that one.
I, I, I...
Well, I think we were all... It's a democracy. I mean, you have to take that serious. You can't just say, "Well, we're gonna listen to your comments" unless we think we disagree with them and then we'll disregard them.
Right, no, there's just a degree of, two very different points of view there and I wonder which one is...
It was a little bit of a surprise for us too, to see that there was such a schism. But there it is.
Yeah, and so the challenge has been to try and follow the town's input?
Yeah.
And, you know, make it as workable as possible.
Okay. Well, my only input there would be, you know, don't, don't restrict it any more than you have to in order to keep the people who are offended by the looks of solar off your back.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you look at the questionnaire, you have people who express your exact opinion and then others who said, "I don't wanna, I don't wanna see any of this in line."
And I don't want any of that woke solar power stuff.
Yeah, okay. I, I understand.
So, you know, yeah. Any other comments?
I, I was just wondering, so the issue of clear cutting, I don't think it's just about whether you can see it or not. Isn't it an issue of people not wanting clear cutting?
Yeah, I mean, exactly. And the other part of it, and a big part of it, was that there being respect or whatever you wanna call it for the, you know, if you have seven acres of ecosystem, you know, if you, and Mark has taught us a lot about this whole issue. When you, when you measure carbon savings one-on-one, of trees versus solar, solar comes out way ahead. But it's a little bit of apples to oranges because you're also dealing with seven acres of ecosystem and everything associated with that. So, it's not exactly a fair comparison. And a lot of people felt strongly about, very strongly about that.
And carbon isn't the only thing that is of concern to people. You know, there's, you could value the, an environmental, you know, land that's, that's got forest and animals and things on it and what...
And some people have just valued the aesthetics they like, you know? It, I mean, in, in dealing with this, it's not, not a measure for us to go and say that, make ju, too many judgments about, well, we agree or disagree, but these are, these are, this is the feedback we got.
Well, there are no restrictions on cutting trees?
None.
On your land?
No, you can clear cut. This, this has no impact on, on anybody's right to cut every tree they see. We, we have no ability to do that. That's, that's the state law. That's, that's the state law. But what this does is limit a certain type of cutting that would impact the solar going on. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just kind of build on that point that, you know, as you just mentioned, the ordinance does not prevent clear cutting, it just imposes this five-year wait limit. And a comment that I made in, in a previous meeting is that, you know, if you're gonna clear cut with the ultimate intent of building solar on your land, really, the best solution would be to put that solar on the land immediately and not have to wait five years because then you'd be generating clean energy and offsetting carbon for that five-year period instead of just letting the land, you know, sit there.
Right, I mean, this is the, the, I think, the only way we could come up with a means to reflect what people asked for, to inhibit, I mean, because what, what a majority, more than a majority asked for was not to allow clear cutting for the purposes of putting up a solar energy system. So I think that's why we ended up with that. That's what, what was that, yeah, so like, yeah, fifty-eight point three percent were, were, should we allow multi-acre solar arrays in line where woodland was clear cut for the primary purpose of installing the ray? And fifty-eight plus percent said, no.
Yeah, I'll just note, I just heard you say the word primary purpose. And so again, this raises the issue, you know, what if you have a dual use there?
Right, I mean, how much we can parse that, it becomes almost impossible. All right, anything else, please?
I got a few more. So on page four, fourteen sixty B, so this is, this is where you limit the, or you create the, the large solar energy district focused on Route ten south, south of the common. And at least in my opinion, that, that is like overly restrictive. I think if you go through and look at the parcels of land along Route ten there, you'll probably find that there's, you know, maybe only two or three or four that are possibly developable for solar. And so I guess from that perspective, I think it's pretty limiting.
So, I mean, are you talking about the wording or just, just the district in and of itself?
Just the restriction of the district to where it's loc, you know, where you have it in Route ten south.
I think I can address that. Again, the, the famous survey, that's where people were willing and barely, barely were willing to have.
Yeah, and I, I think if you look at the results from that, what you'd see is that, I mean, I think barely is the right word. I think that was a majority barely above other areas in town. And so, you know, I'm just questioning how much you can read into what was reported through that survey. But one other point on this is that that area, Route ten south, that, that's ever-source service territory. But a significant portion of the town is served by the New Hampshire Electric Cooperative. And group net metering, you can't cross utility service territories. And so if there were a system located in Route ten south that was to be group net metered for the town purposes, folks that are served by the cooperative would not be able to participate in that. And, you know, I suppose it would be possible to build a medium solar energy system in NHGC territory. So maybe we could serve them that way. But just wanted to point out that the cooperative customers will not be able to be served by a large solar energy system if you limit it to Route ten south.
Mark, is that the delivery system or the supply that can't cross?
I think it's, it's whoever does the billing, so it's, it's ever, it's delivered.
It's the delivery system then?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, so I don't think the CPC and H thing would factor into this.
No, exactly, that's what I was trying to clarify.
Yeah, okay.
Can I add a comment to that?
Sure.
Yeah, I, I had sort of the same, same reaction. And my other reaction is every time I drive down East Stepford Road and I drive along there and I see all those south-facing hills, I think you could power all of Lime and most of Piermont and Orford with one project on a perfect site. Now, I don't know who owns all the land, I know some of it's in conservation easement and other things like that. But I, I think there's some other places, some other great places in town that are visible, but it would be too bad to lose some great, some of the perhaps best sites in town because we're trying to limit it.
So here's, again, we are, we're trying to reflect the feedback in that, not anybody's particular opinion, but majority feedback. And the, I think the other thing to keep in mind about this amendment going forward, I, I imagine that this amendment is, if it passes, is not remotely going to be the end of this, that there's going to be a lot of evolution.
That thought, I thought of that too.
Yeah.
Start somewhere.
We've got to start somewhere.
Yeah, I get it.
Okay, more?
Anybody else want to jump in?
I keep jumping in on you, sorry.
No, no, no. So I guess I'll move to fourteen sixty C, which you previously brought up. This is the requirement that sixty percent of the power generated by medium and large systems be sold for use at properties in Lime. I think I tend to agree with what Rich Menge said, you know, for, for these medium and large systems, there's going to be a fair amount of documentation where the power is flowing. And so I think you probably could at least monitor this. I don't know if you could enforce it, but you could, you could certainly know contractually who is being served by that power. And so I guess my only recommendation here would be to get rid of the word sold because technically you're not really selling the power. If you're participating in group net metering, it's, it's basically a bill credit you're getting. There's not necessarily a sale of power.
So could, could we put?
Supply.
Supplied or credited or?
Yeah, I was thinking, let's see, what are they, you could potentially use language like, you know, as determined by contractual arrangements or something like that. Just, just something other than the word sold, I think, might be better there.
It, it does say sales on the electric bill, but I get it, you, you know, that's my, my sales.
For net metering, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not that that's relevant.
Supply, I mean, how is that, I think?
Would be supplied for use. All right, let's write that down and we'll come back.
Supplied to properties. Instead of sold for use, just supplied to.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, I just have two more, sorry. So fourteen sixty G, this is just the clear cut one. And we've already talked about that, but I, I guess I would be in favor of just eliminating that. I don't think it's, I mean, I understand why you have it there, but I just wanted to, you know, for the record, voice my, yeah. And then the last one I have is fourteen sixty H on page five. There's, there's language there about all power and communication lines, both onsite and offsite, serving a ground-mounted system shall be buried. To me, that seems too broad because of the word serving and also offsite. I mean, you could think of the entire grid as serving that kind of system. And so that would require, you know, ever-source burying all of its line.
Well, what have we said? All?
Accessing.
Well, all.
On-site accessing.
Well, I, I, what you're concerned about is that it could get confused with, with ever-source or something. So we, we could say, you know, anything related to the applicant's proposal, something along those lines.
Or you could say like up to the point of interconnection with the grid or something like that.
Yeah, okay. So we want to exclude. Grid components.
Just be careful as you're talking utilities also, not just power, but there may be communication lines. So by saying grid, you're excluding.
Is it any overhead lines?
You might want to say any new proposed.
Any proposed, like all proposed power, yeah, I think that's an easy way to say Okay.
That's all I got, thank you.
That's all you got? Come on. Yeah, I mean, I, I think no matter what we come up with, there's, there are going to be holes in this and there are going to be things that people don't like and those will be changed over, over time. All right, so now we can, John?
Are you past the point of making changes now?
No, that's what we're here for.
Oh, yeah.
So, right. We welcome any comments you have.
Do you have comments?
Oh, I, I do have a comment that I think maybe we should vote for this because we should try it.
Okay.
And then, but other than that, I'm interested in how you, what you guys work out.
Good, good, good point.
As a procedural matter, did we receive any email communications regarding this?
Yes, we did. We, we.
Someone want to ask if there's anybody on Zoom, there are quite a few people.
Okay.
They're not showing up in.
Okay.
Sue McKenzie has. Sue, you need yourself, Sue.
Clara, okay, do you hear me now?
Yes, yeah.
I would second all of Mark's proposals and our suggestions. I think it's much more beneficial to the town and the citizens in town to be as permissive as possible without being obnoxious about it, but to allow this to happen as easily as possible without owner's restrictions that are going to cause people to not be able to do it.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else? All right, and in, in terms of your question. Jim Nurse sent everybody, sent us all a letter. And I think his main points were about group net metering of the trees and the onsite-offsite.
Underground burying the power.
Right.
Yeah, we've covered it.
Yeah, I think.
Could you summarize what he, what he said for the, for this meeting, since not everybody has heard it?
Well, that's what I was just doing. I guess, I guess you didn't, I think I did a very good job.
Well, no, you, you mentioned that he talked about group net metering, but is he for it or against it?
Oh, he's, he's, well, he's again what we have in here.
Okay, I mean. Okay, and then trees and onsite-offsite or?
Yeah, he, he, he didn't like what most people didn't, didn't like who are, who have commented tonight. Pretty much the same subject matter as, as I read it. Is that accurate? All right, so I think.
I actually have comments too. Should I virtually step away from the table here?
No, no, don't virtually.
All right. I, I have the same concerns about the burying power lines. I would ask that the board be, make a clear statement. When I, when we talked about it the last time, my sense was that the board said, well, people are spending a lot of money to put these systems up and so it won't be much of an increase to bury the power lines and to bury the telecommunication lines. What data did the board use to, to make that determination? I, I think it could be a whole lot of money. And so it's, it's a little bit for us just to say, well, they're spending a million dollars, we should make them spend a little bit more. That's point one.
Can I just, let's go over?
Let me, let me use the same rules, John, let me just say all my points and then you can give your response.
I don't, it doesn't have to be contentious. I think the, the other side of the coin is by what virtue do we, do we not do that? Some people are very concerned with, with aesthetics.
And, and so can we get a clear statement from the board, the reason for this particular requirement? Is it an aesthetic?
I think it is.
I mean, you know, so that, that's one, as, as a member of the public, I'm asking that question. So let me move on. I am not in favor of the language that says the power needs to be sold primarily to people in Lime or supplied or whatever. I think it's a, I think it's a disincentive. It's, each, each of the constrictions, restrictions we put in this are disincentives and so that's the second thing. Prohibition on clear cutting, I think the science and all say that this is clear cutting to put solar, decreases the carbon dramatically more than the, than the forest will ever sequester. And so that, I think that that's, it's clear that it's a disincentive for people to do the things that Ross and Tom are talking about. And finally, I think the group net metering section in fourteen point five zero is, it's yet another hurdle that somebody has to clear that doesn't result in a better outcome for the town and it's just hard. So those are my, those are my points. Thank you, John.
You're welcome. Other public board comments? Or shall we just get down, you've got another?
One, one other regarding the buried power line. I've driven by a lot of solar projects and I can't tell you that for any of them that I ever noticed whether the lines were buried or not buried. So.
But does that mean that you noticed them or you didn't notice them?
No, I just, it, it, I don't, I don't, I don't know. I'm guessing that, that they're not all buried. I'm guessing that a lot of them are, are there, but, but you just, it's just to me, it didn't register. So I think, I feel it's a little bit of a red herring, that, that the, the power line going in is not the most usually obvious part of the, the project. There's other, there are other parts. So I'm just sort of agreeing with Rich that I'm not sure it's really necessarily, I understand why people might want to minimize, but I don't know it's a big issue. The question I had was, the, the skiway in their annual report this year talked about putting in solar, a, a vision for solar power. Did you guys talk about that? And is there any, any revision that might encourage, discourage, whatever? Because I think he actually mentioned seven acres. I don't know where the number came from or, or how, but I'm all for getting the ski, skiway to be one hundred percent renewable as fast as possible because you're making snow with diesel fuel right now.
We do include the skiway.
I was gonna suggest that add the skiway as a large solar.
Me too. I like that. I don't know where they put it, but, but they should.
Not for large.
Just for medium? Because, hold on, where, where is the section where we include the? This district. Well, this.
I know we have that.
It's fourteen point six A.
Is the skiway anywhere exempt from zone?
No. Fourteen point six A you said?
Medium are allowed in skiway.
All right, so we could.
Yeah, we should probably have large.
So what is the skiway district? Is it just the skiway property?
It's what they own, I guess, the common.
Okay, we're gonna have to work that out because we can't have the language just large because then we're, we had said for the rural and commercial, that was medium, but. We had said for the rural and commercial, um, that was medium, but skiway.
Just need to work it into the language, fourteen six D.
Skiway should be large. Okay. Any, anything else? Yeah?
Just a bit of philosophy of the people on the island of Samso that is the self-sufficient island in Denmark that's, uh, uh, generating all its power onsite. Uh, the first thing they did was to bury their wires. That's how it all started. Uh, so I'm in favor of having wires buried, especially if we could do it tonight. Tomorrow may be different. Secondly, a few years ago, people were, uh, engaged in this town of looking for some way that we could get something manufactured in this town. And all this time, we've been sitting on something that we don't have to manufacture. It just comes up every morning. And that's the feeling that we should have. Let's take advantage of it, make it easy and do it right. So, good luck.
Thank you. So, yeah.
Uh, one other feeling I, I hope you'll, you'll have in your deliberations. You know, look around the room here, not too many of us have to worry about whether this world is going to be habitable in thirty years. We have one young woman here who might, I'm not gonna put her on the spot. She might feel very, very differently than a lot of these people who write in and say, I don't wanna look at it. Please don't put her on the spot. It'd offend you. How about you, Grace? It'd offend you? I don't think so. I think young people are gonna have a hard enough time, um, with the global warming and with climate change and, um, just in your considerations and whatever you present to the town. Please keep in mind the uncles.
Okay, thank you. Alright, everybody ready to?
Somebody spoke.
Oh, does somebody have something to say?
You're here.
We're here, okay.
Thank you.
Um, we better get moving on this. So, everybody's heard all the comments. Why don't we start with the, um, the legal comments? Everybody has, has that? Okay, so, so the first thing she says is on page two, fourteen five. So if I have a roof mounted system on my house and I sell it back, yeah, and use the grid, do I need a CUP? So, I guess, let's address the issue of do we want to keep the group net metering, um, stuff? Mark pointed out, Mark, Mark pointed out that, that it is doable. So what does the board think? Do we, do we wanna, do, do we wanna stick with that? That it was the most popular feedback we got? If it's feasible, as, as Mark says, we, we could do it, but what does the board wanna do?
I think we should keep it.
Okay.
Do you, do you want any group net metered solar energy system that's ground mounted? Cause if you have a warehouse and you put it on a warehouse roof, do we really mind?
I don't.
So just adding ground mounted to that would.
So any ground mounted?
Group net metered.
Yeah, that's a good thought.
Yeah.
Can somebody point out to me what, what paragraph we're talking about?
Fourteen five.
Page three.
Group net metered solar energy systems.
Do you have her comments?
Yeah, they're in red.
The, the, the concept of.
Those are the ones that are.
Having a.
Yeah, see, that never came through, that's why I sent you.
Was simply to have presented to us, uh, who the, who were the principals or the, the, who are gonna be the recipients of the energy, is that correct? So that we could then turn around and possibly apply, uh, fourteen six C. Is that, is that the whole reason for the CUP?
I believe so. Well, and we, yeah, it, these would potentially be larger systems and it would need a CUP.
See, with, in fourteen two, a small ener, solar energy system does not define anything except that it's mounted on your building. So if you have a big building, it could be a large system.
But we're saying that if it's, if it's on a building, we're exempting it.
Yeah, I think we just need to be clear about what, what we means.
So, so we don't care about the percentage going to line if it's on a big building?
Well, you tell me.
Well, I don't know. I, I mean, I just, I'm just trying not, not to lose our train of thought.
Right, but I think, I think you're making a good point.
When we were, when we put it as, as CUP, the whole idea, I guess, was that, you know, there's a certain amount of paperwork that's required by the state. We would probably wanna see that. They have to recruit all the names of people.
I don't think we could do it without a CUP. They're just, there, there, there's no oversight otherwise.
Right, and where would we need to oversee, oversee it?
You mean, why would we need to?
A, a roof mounted one, or a ground mounted one, yeah.
No, I'm talking about ground mounted. The, well, the roof one, you brought up that, well, do we not care that?
Right, that's what I'm bringing up now.
So, I think that's a good point. We might want to have that oversight even on, on a roof, roof mounted.
I could be wrong about this, but my sense was that when we asked that question in the survey, what people were thinking about when they responded was somebody taking their pasture and filling it up with solar panels.
I do think that's.
And I, I, I don't think you'd get the same reaction if you were talking about, you know, the warehouse down the street and somebody puts some solar panels on the roof. I don't think anyone cares about that.
I think that's a good, very good point.
I mean, we didn't ask the question with that.
No, no.
We didn't titrate it at that, at that level, but, but if I had to guess, that would be my guess about what the response we got means.
Yeah.
So I, I'd be in favor of saying.
Just saying.
You know, ground mounted and if, if you put it on the roof or something, we're.
We're not even addressed, we're not addressed ground mounted.
Yep. John, I'd like to, um, raise this question once, um, and then see what the group provides. We talk about group net metering in the definitions, we talk about it in the fourteen point five. And there's some other peripheral mention of it. I see group net metering as a particular co, uh, contractual arrangement between a bunch of people to use some power. I don't think it adds anything to this ordinance. We, if you wanna group meter the solar off your roof, God bless you. If you wanna put five acres of solar panels out, you're gonna be covered by the, uh, conditional use permit. And I don't see that the conditional use, uh, I'm sorry. I don't see that group net metering changes anything we're doing. It doesn't pull in the bad guys or exclude the good guys. And I, it would just make it shorter, take a definition out and get one, and be one fewer place to get hung up.
Which, which, which part would you be referring to, Rich, now?
Yeah, in the ordinance, um, on the second page, there's a definition of group net metered systems. And I'm suggesting we can take that out and then any place that it's mentioned further on in the ordinance, just strike those words because it doesn't include anything new. It doesn't make anything better. That's, that's my argument. I would ask the, the board to discuss it.
Okay, so my question is, I mean, what, my recollection is the reason we have this is it was a way to address the idea of energy coming in, uh, producers of energy keeping, uh, primarily to line. So if we're.
But, I mean, that's fourteen point six zero C, right?
Right.
That doesn't say anything about group net meter.
Yeah, I think you could get to where we wanna be without having to say the phrase group net metered. Do you think so, Mark?
Yeah, I think Rich has got a good point there. I think you can keep the, the C there with the sixty percent requirement without having previously defined group net meter.
So, what is the board think?
Alright, I'm not so sure, one way or the other. I mean.
I don't know, I guess it's. So fourteen C, he said medium, large and group net metered solar energy systems require conditional use permit.
Just take the group net meter.
Right. If you've got a small system, we don't care what you do. Medium and large, you have to meet the regulations, whether you use it all yourself or sell it to all your neighbors.
Yeah, the only function of group net metering in that, in that.
Content.
Um, piece of the ordinance is to pull in small group net metered, uh, systems, which we don't wanna do, right?
Alright, so.
So it's, yeah, it sounds like it's covered.
So we can get rid of that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Is everybody, oh.
I think so.
Okay. Good, thank you.
I'm not sure what group net meter.
I hate making drastic changes.
I thought they were screwing us up.
Okay, no, I definitely will.
Alright, so we're, we're, we're getting rid of fourteen five?
You think they're rid of the definition?
And we're getting rid of fourteen five and the definition?
No, no, I don't think you're getting rid of fourteen five. I think you're just striking the group net meter and all the way up to solar ener, any solar energy system that supplies energy to users, to use is located on the lot, you see? Fourteen five, you just take, take all the group net metered part out.
Any group net metering.
I would change to say any.
Any solar energy system that supplies energy to use is located on the lot.
Any ground mounted or just?
Yes, yes.
Any ground mounted?
Yep.
Solar energy system. Et cetera.
And you wanna change that fourteen five to some other?
Saying fourteen.
Yeah.
Oh, right. Oh.
That would be a group net metered situation. If it's located on a lot, other than a lot, to which.
Yes, but let, let the function define it instead of giving it a particular name.
I mean, I don't see the, the, I don't see the problem with saying group net meter either, one way or the other.
Well, unless there's another mechanism that comes down the pipe.
Fourteen three and fourteen four are, already require a conditional use permit, so I'm not sure why you need to restate that in fourteen five.
Yeah, we could maybe get rid of that provision.
Five altogether?
I'm not sure what it does for us.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, it, it talks about, it talks about, um, multiple members, that's all.
Fourteen five.
Right.
Yeah.
And so it, so it actually is sort of invoking a group net metered situation. And so, to the extent that we would wanna know about that, I don't know.
So that's really the question. The question is if you have a small system, two or three houses, modest, electrical use, and they decide to put in a small system that they're gonna share, do we wanna CUP for that? I would, my inclination would be.
Is that, is that group net metering then? They're hardwired together?
It could, no, it could be group net meter.
But it could also just be hardwired together, right?
Either way, I'm not sure why you guys would care about that, if it's a small system.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. But doesn't group net metering mean more than one person? You're selling it to?
No, it's, it's.
Not yourself.
It's more than one meter, so if.
Oh, just more than one meter?
Yeah, so if you're a single, if you're like a resident who has like several buildings with each with its own meter, you can group net meter across those.
Okay, cause I thought it just meant more than one, than one person.
Less is more.
Right, um, I, I, I move that we strike the definition of group net metering and, uh, strike fourteen point five zero completely. Um, and then anyplace else that mentions group net meter and just take that out.
Alright, well, you know, I mean, one thing I, I think we need to keep in mind is as we do this quickly, that we're, uh, we're not making some kind of mistake here.
Well, there's another hearing, right? So, Mark will be.
No, we can't, we don't have time, we don't have time after that next meeting. We can't change anything. So.
But we can get these revisions out on the website and have people look at them.
Yeah, but we can't change it. What we do tonight is gonna go to the town.
What will happen at the next hearing is that the board will either vote to send it to town meeting or say, no, it's not ready and not send it. It's really the.
We're not doing that.
We're not doing that.
We're not doing that.
So we're saying here that any medium or large solar energy system requires a CUP?
Any ground mounted.
Right, right.
So the only place we could say that would be in.
Fourteen three, fourteen four, say that, so.
Yeah.
And, you know, in, in actual fact, anybody building a medium or a large array almost certainly is gonna be through group net metering. I mean, unless you've got your.
Sort of like.
Your smelting factory in the back and you're gonna use all the, you're gonna use all the power yourself.
Yeah, or you have thirty-five electric cars.
Right, but, I mean, in fact, if anybody having medium or large is gonna be group, is gonna be selling the power to somebody else, they're gonna have to have a conditional use because they've got medium or large.
Alright, so what does the board wanna do? Rich made a proposal.
Yeah, I made a motion.
What, let's take a vote.
Could I have a second?
Yeah, so let's take a vote.
All those in favor?
Okay, so we're getting rid of five, fourteen five and the definition, right?
And then anyplace else where it says.
Well, we, we better find those now because.
Well, there's not many.
Well, any of, fourteen six, I believe, in that very first paragraph.
Yeah.
That might be it.
So medium and large.
Yes, that's it.
Medium and large.
Right, uh, and then in fourteen ten A, it says to encourage use of solar energy systems and group net metering opportunities, but we can just strike that. So fourteen ten, um, the very, the purposes, uh, first page.
Yeah, or you could just not capitalize group net metering and it wouldn't matter.
Right? And that's the last occurrence of the word.
Yeah, yeah, I think we should leave it as well.
Yeah, okay, so we're leaving it in? Okay. Thank you. Alright.
You're gonna leave it in the, in the definition, but take it out everywhere else.
No, we're taking out the definition.
Or you're taking the definition out as well?
Of course, then when we refer to group net metering in the body, we don't have a definition, but, but.
Fourteen forty, we have to add the skiway district.
Fourteen four?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Add the skiway district.
Okay, so.
And they're going to require a conditional use permit?
Of course, yeah. So, alright, here, we're getting into some complicated stuff because she wanted to, she took out, fourteen three, she took out medium solar energy systems, maybe principal or accessory uses uh, in the rural, commercial or skiway zones. She wanted, she put that elsewhere.
Well, she added that, I mean, in the rural.
Looks like an addition.
Yeah, fourteen thirty and fourteen forty, she had, she took it out of.
On the lot.
She took out, yeah.
Of the, in the, the fourteen sixty.
So we just change that to say, um, in the rural and commercial zoning districts and scratch skiway.
Why?
No, they can have it.
Oh, 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 okay, so it'll be in.
We have to add it.
Oh, 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 okay, so it'll be in both medium and large, yeah.
Yeah, we have to add it to fourteen four, add skiway to fourteen four.
Yeah. Yeah, so we should make fourteen three and fourteen four the same?
No. We're not allowing it in the rural, commercial.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but, but do we need to add skiway zoning district to fourteen four?
Right, yes.
Cause we don't, we don't know whether they're gonna build a medium sized system or a large system, we don't care, they could do either.
Yeah, right, up to seven acres, yeah.
Yeah.
And skiway.
Wait a minute, so you're saying in fourteen four, we have to add what?
Skiway zoning district.
Say in the large solar district and-
The skiway. Or, or, it should be disjunctive, I think.
Disjunctive?
So, so in the title? Or in the, or in the body?
In the body, I think it should, fourteen point four oh should say, large solar energy system, or principal or accessory uses in the large solar energy district or the skiway zoning district.
Okay, and shall we require additional use permit? And, and Laura said that in both fourteen three and fourteen four, we wanna add, because we have to, uh, site plan review. So it's, and site plan review, and site plan review because-
In addition to CUP?
Yeah, because-
They're commercial.
They're commercial, yeah, it's a commercial use, so we're required by law, um, even though it's kinda redundant.
Yeah.
But the, the outcome of the site plan review can be the conditional use permit.
Right.
So it's not a dual-
Right. So you're getting all of this stuff down?
I'm keeping the minutes.
Is what, is that a yes or a no?
That's enough.
Alright, well, who's?
I'm ready.
Are you getting all of this down?
So we, so we have to require a site plan review for medium and large, or just large?
For both, for everything.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mark. As usual, you-
Really helpful.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Guy works really hard.
I know.
Did we, did we get the right language in place to say that medium and large are ground mounted?
I don't know. That's fourteen?
I think it's there, it starts off.
Medium is a solar, the definition has got, medium is a ground mounted. And large is ground, both are defined-
I mean, honestly, there's no way to have a non-ground mounted large system down the line, there isn't enough, nobody has enough building roofs there.
Well, we need a Costco warehouse or something, and then we can do it.
Amazon distribution center.
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds like ground mounted's in the right places.
Ground mounted, right, all three of them. Alright, so.
Okay, you know what, I think we need to start at the beginning and run through this because there were comments from the public.
Right, I started to summarize my notes generally and, um, Mark talked about land between components, access roads, and then we got into clear cuts.
Well, the first thing was the issue of the, is it a collection system or is it an energy system?
Yeah, solar energy, as opposed to collection system.
Right.
Yes, before that, you're right.
That's fine.
Alright, so we're gonna, we're gonna go with that.
Yes, I think, I think that's fine.
And then he wanted to clarify-
He wanted to clarify land area in between components of the system. I think we should-
We brought this up before because of your picks, that, that, that it was hard to use this this land between components of the system, because-
I, I would keep it simple, which is that, I mean, my interpretation of this is if you have a system, you know, it's a, it's a clearly defined system, and then you have something in between it, you have another clearly defined system.
Well, maybe we don't want to include the land area. Why, why do we want to include the land area between components of the system?
That was the whole point.
Yeah, or maybe, uh, the footprint also includes the land area between components of the system, so long as it is less than ten feet.
But we don't know what the average, you know, we have more information, we're just guessing a number.
Yeah, we have more information. Yeah, I, I think we should just keep it the way we had it, it's simple.
Can you administer that, David? That if somebody had an obvious clump of solar panels, couple of racks, and then cornfield, and then another clump of racks?
I don't think it would be up to me, I think it'd be up to the planning board during the site plan and the conditional use, to look at that and say-
Why would they do that?
Why would, who would?
Why wouldn't they put it all together?
I don't know. It could be that they're geographical-
Right. Cause he said this, this eco thing that he was talking about, the, um-
But in reality, knowing a little bit about farming that I do, you're not gonna farm in here between these solar panels. I mean, you know, they have to be huge to grow, hey, you gotta have this huge equipment that comes in, and all of them.
Well, you can run sheep on them.
Yeah, who's gonna run, I mean, that's reality, right, so I think all the solar panels are gonna be together, basically, I mean, they're not gonna be separated to farm.
Well, if they're, if they're trackers and they're large tracker arrays, they may need to be fairly far apart, you know?
Yeah, a little bit, but I don't think anybody's gonna-
But that's the point, you wanna calculate that area.
The land area in between, that's the whole point.
The only thing I could think of as a legitimate reason is if you have, um, you know, every once in a while in the state of New Hampshire, you find these little outcroppings of rock that, uh, you can't deal with, so you put panels here, you have a big piece of ledge, say, I'm not gonna deal with that, I'm gonna put the rest over here.
That would still be a discrete.
Right, but you're right, it would be a discrete, um, two separate discrete areas.
Right.
And you would include the area between everything on this area and everything in this area, but not that large, you know, just a common sense decision. And it would be something that the board would look at during site plan review or conditional use, and they would be able to make a legitimate call on that.
Alright, so let's leave, leave that as is.
Is the wording clear, I guess?
Well, we, we went over this a lot, and I think it's a point of diminishing returns. Alright, so then the next thing?
Is the access road?
Yeah.
Which section is that in?
Um, that's right below large solar energies.
So it's the number of that?
Uh, it's, the definitions, C.
Yeah, right, right above add to section four four two.
Excuse me, definitions, it, it's beyond C, it's a, it's sort of a, it's sort of a footnote to the definitions.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's the, or the, yeah, I see, the measurement of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Well, as I said, I think what we meant was the access road where it starts at the edge of the system.
Why don't we just say that, uh, does not include access roads, not otherwise part, that are not otherwise part of the-
Yeah, or encompass by the, by this area of the system.
Does not include access roads, cumulative footprint does not include access roads, fences and equipment.
Only, I think you don't wanna get into this double negative land.
Yeah.
I think it's, might wanna say, only includes access roads.
Outside the, outside the area, outside the-
Inside the area.
Well, what this is saying is fences and equipment housed in a pre-existing structure. For the calculation, for the calculation of size of a solar energy system, the measurement of cumulative footprint does not include access roads, fences and equipment housed in a pre-existing structure.
I think an Oxford comma.
That's just the equipment that's being modeled.
I think an Oxford comma would help that one.
Well, we can just change the order, just, just have the, does not include fences and equipment housed in pre-existing structures or access roads.
That are not within the-
That are not within the-
Solar system.
Boundary.
Or boundary.
With that, yeah, that's not bad.
Yeah.
Well, so what is it?
Is it okay to say access roads not within the solar system boundaries?
We talked about footprint area, is that strong enough?
Not within the footprint.
Does that is strong enough to definition, so the footprint area is measured by the, measured by the total in the land area, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And then, uh, it does, uh, footprint does not include access roads.
Within the footprint, yeah.
Within the footprint.
Yeah, that would work.
So what about the equipment housed in?
No, 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 wait, 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 that's not what we want, we want to, if, the, the, the access roads within the footprint are within the footprint.
They're, they count.
Okay, they count.
Yes.
It's access road, we don't wanna include access roads that are not within the footprint.
So maybe just to say-
You can't do that here because you're defining footprint, and you can't do that circular.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, not-
So I like Kiwi's language about within the solar system boundary, if that's something that's understandable by people.
Yep. Does that sound to understandable to you, David?
Yes.
Okay.
So what is it that sounds?
Not within the boundary?
Solar system.
Yeah, but what is, what is the exact, the whole wording, because that's what's gonna be in there. For the calculation of size of a solar energy system, the measurement of footprint. Cumulative footprint does not include access roads, fences and equipment.
We were gonna put access roads at the end, I think.
Were we?
Well, only if it had to, it needed another clause to define it. Yeah, we, well, it does, we're gonna put in not within the system boundaries, so I would put it last, just to eliminate confusion. So fences, equipment housed in pre-existing structures, or access roads not within the system boundaries.
Yes.
Good.
Lock it down. Or add, would you say add or or?
Or.
Okay. Okay. The system boundaries. So you got that in that?
Yeah.
Okay, so then we're down to add to section four four two, you should also add medium and large solar energy systems to the table of uses, so you got that, David?
Yeah, and as long as the board is happy with, I can add those.
Right, because since they may be the principal use of the property and-
Is that table five one or something?
Uh, four two.
Four two, okay.
Okay, then we go, um, we're up for purposes, purposes, then the next thing I think we have is fourteen two. So she has small solar energy systems are allowed as an accessory use.
Wait, can we go back to the table one more time, just?
To which? Go back to the table?
Yeah, the, the table four two, um, there was, is it?
Four four two.
Four four two. Do you think you need to add to the, you know, when you look at the table, it talks about all the solar, or all the districts, and now you've added a solar-
It's the other district.
So do you need to add, um, that to, that solar district to the table?
Yeah, this is four one, right?
So it's four, table four one?
Page twenty?
Yep, yeah, table four one, I'm sorry.
I guess we'd have to. So.
So we add it over here?
Oh, boy.
And the question then is, is look at all the other-
This is four one, four four two.
All the other items.
Is it a table?
And then all the other com, uses, are they allowed?
Because the solar district crosses two different.
Yeah, so how do we do that?
Does it, or does what?
The commercial and the rural district.
Yeah.
Because it gets out, off, off the road in the skiway.
But we're, but we're, we're creating a new independent district, so it, it's, it's a, it's the lar, whatever it's called, the large.
Route ten south.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know, it's, uh, it's not quite the same thing as the, the zoning districts.
That we have, it's different, so we're adding a different district, just like we added Holt's ledge.
But when we, okay, so when we add, um, the solar, medium and large to this table, how, do we, um, you know, when we look at, um, you know, the commercial district,
can we add it as, uh, like, uh, the shoreline conservation district or some other district that's defined, I mean, because in fact, this is defined by physical characteristics or physical distances from-
Why can't, why can't we just call this-
Well, the lawyer wants to add to table four one, and to say those, but, um, so when we say line center, when we look at the, you know, large solar systems, no, line common, no, rural district, maybe?
I, I would say no.
Partially.
I would, I would have a, a new, you know, just like we added Holt's ledge.
Yeah.
I would add whatever we wanted to be, uh, this district.
Well, it's- But not all of these uses are
Yeah.
allowed in all of the entirety of the solar district.
All of which uses, you mean the ones they're listing here?
Well, the medium and large.
Yeah, agriculture, residential.
So I would just put no, put no everywhere.
Yeah.
But then you're, you're saying-
Part of it is, is allowed.
Then you're saying that agricultural uses are not allowed along route ten south?
We're, no, we're, we're-
Because it's in the, the solar zoning district.
But the solar zoning-
Why can't you just put a yes there, it is allowed there, under agriculture? I mean, basically, we wanna add
Yep.
the solar district on this, and then solar in one of these things, and then to the appropriate yeses and no's.
Then we could just mimic what's, what's already there.
Right. I mean, that's all we have to do, is just integrate two different, a new column and a new row.
Right.
Right, but we have me, medium is different than large solar system, right?
Well, that is true, and, and that, and we have SPR for site plan review, we could put CUP for for, um, whatever that stands for.
Conditional use permit.
Conditional use permit, exactly, so we could, I mean, basically, you could, instead of SPR, we could say CUP.
But we have to have the SPR too.
Yes, well, we, yeah, oh, S, well, you could say CUP comma SPR.
Or slash.
Or slash SPR.
Right. Oh, boy.
Would, would this be the first time you've added a, a sort of a new district?
No, we, we done, we did it, the whole sledge.
A while ago.
But it was a, a different-
Different issues.
Yeah.
It was much simpler.
And I'll give it, I'll put it in, give it a cut to see, you know, if I come up with any things to just-
So actually, we have to add three roads, right, we have to do residential solar, medium solar and large solar.
No, no, just the district.
Just the large energies district.
No, no, but we've gotta have the roads, we've gotta add roads, the solar. Solar's gotta be in one of these areas.
Would be, where would solar go?
Well, I think under residential, solar, residential solar, and then at the bottom, you could have large solar, medium solar, large solar.
But it's not just residential, it could be commercial as well.
I'm, uh, well, then you could just say, you could skip these headings here uh, and just say residential solar, medium sized solar, and large solar, and just put them right at the bottom as three rows, and treat them all separately.
Is it really necessary for us to add this to this table at this time, I mean, it seems like-
I know, no, I, I think we're making trouble for ourselves.
Well, I think so, and I, I think if we, if we're clear in our definition, I don't-
It becomes an administrative change after the, after it passes.
But isn't solar an accessory use?
Yeah, or, or we can, we can change it next year.
Isn't it, this is a-
It could be principal.
But I'm, sorry, change, I cannot make any change to this document
Yeah, you're right.
um, unless it is voted on at town meeting two, so I, I can't just- So I, I can't just.
Let me propose this again, John. I'm looking at, uh, three, looking at descriptions and objectives of districts. I see, maybe we do have to, so we got the line, we got the various districts, and then we have conservation districts. We're talking about wetlands, conservation steep slope, shoreland, agricultural soils, float prone, ridgeline. We could put another section in, could be a three point.
You're gonna, can't write that tonight.
No, I mean, I was gonna say, if David doesn't mind, maybe you should put it on paper. You know, and see how it comes out, because I think the problem is, we don't, unless we see it on the paper here, it's harder.
And just, under four thirty-one, only you, uses listed in article four, and legal non-conforming uses specified in article eight shall be allowed. So you have to put it in.
In the table.
Otherwise, it's not.
It's effective.
It's not effective.
Can you put in a row that says solar, see, solar amendment? It's not a, it's not a one place, so, cause we, in the.
Well, that's, that was my argument early on, to have it as one, because you could then do it like you did affordable housing and say, see article.
Yes.
Eleven, and.
Well, why don't we do that?
Cause you don't have time to rewrite this whole thing as a separate article.
Well, isn't there other choices to ask David to put something together and hope that?
Hope for the best?
Yeah, cause I think, as I said, I think this is gonna be much easier to see if you actually write it out, you know, in terms of evangelism, you know?
So when do we actually need this document finalized? It, it isn't tonight, is it?
Well, effectively, it's tonight.
Well, we need to have agreed on what, what it's supposed to say, but do we have another day or two to actually get it? Right. In writing and circulated and reviewed? Your decisions tonight, you know, we're not, we don't have to have it. We don't have to have a finalized, polished.
But how are we gonna, how are we gonna make further decisions without a notice meeting?
You can't.
Right.
Well, I mean, could we have, could we have a meeting in a week? I mean, I'm not thrilled by that possibility, but.
You would then need to push out your public hearing another week.
And when does it have to go to the, warrant have to be, it's like February seventh or something, right?
Yes, not, I mean.
If you said the public hearing has to be up to February seventh.
Let him, let him do one.
February fifth is the last day for the planning board to hold a public hearing on the adoption of amendments. So February fifth is the absolute.
Drop dead date.
And that's not going to leave the rest of the people in town offices much time to get it put together to go into the town report. You know, we're, we're jamming up a lot of people at the, the very end by drawing this out as long as you are.
So.
Cause we still have to get it to the printer.
So what, what can we, what is, what can we do here?
You're really bound, what you do tonight.
Okay, so that answers your question.
Because if you go.
Tonight is it?
Well, unless we have another meeting before.
But then you're, you're still going to have to, with that, all those new changes. And you've made changes, and people who are following it know what those changes are now, gets down on paper by next week. That shouldn't be a problem, but if you make more changes at another meeting, then you're gonna, then you need to do a fourteen day, or sixteen day.
And we don't have time for that.
Don't have time for that.
So the short answer is, we need to do it tonight. And I don't know how the hell we're gonna do that.
Well, I think, looking, sorry, no, I didn't bring my, it looks like having small, medium, and large rows. And then a solar district column.
Thank you for my check.
Small is allowed in line center and common, blah, 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 blah.
I'm waiting for my box.
Yeah, that's not, that's all districts, that's not a problem.
Exactly, and the medium is allowed.
Only in the commercial, rural, ski way, and solar district.
Right.
And then large is allowed only in the solar district.
Right.
And, and.
And the ski way too.
And the ski way, that's right.
But with conditional use.
And when I say, but both of them would, would have CPU and, and site plan review. So, so can we agree that just simply adding those three rows and that one column, and filling them in? And when site plan, excuse me, when the conditional use permit is used, we just slash it to site plan review? As opposed to a yes or a no?
Seems like it, seems like it would.
I think that would be consistent with the document that we've just.
The only question I get is where you have overlap.
Right, so describe where we would have overlap.
The rural district, so look at the, the column for rural district. What do you put in that column under large and medium?
No, no, under la, under medium, you would say, uh, site plan review.
Yes.
Uh, see, and, and.
So all of the rural district is allowed?
Right, in the rural district and in the commercial district.
Yeah.
Uh, for medium, and in the solar district, and in the ski way district.
All right, what about large?
For large, it's, it's going to be no, 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 until you get to the, uh, solar district. Where it would say site plan review and conditional use permit.
And the ski way. Even though there's overlap between the, the rural and the commerc, and the solar district.
What do you mean, there's overlap between the two?
There, if you put the districts on top of each other.
Oh, oh, I see. Well, I, I think we, if we define a new district, doesn't that trump the overlap?
Yes, I, I think.
I mean, I would say that that.
I think it's very clear.
I, I think we could, we could certainly add verbiage to the fact that, that this is no longer a rural district, it's now solar district. Just for the purposes of understanding zoning documentation.
That's, I just wanna, I'm asking the question, I'm not, you know.
It's a good question.
Yeah, I don't think it would be confusing. I think, I think it's sort of a Venn diagram, and we've defined this solar district as an overlap of commercial and rural in this area. With very clear boundaries.
I think there's a chance that when she reads this, she's gonna say, this isn't.
With who?
The lawyer.
The lawyer.
Lawyer. The lawyer.
I'm gonna send this back to her as soon as we get it all done.
So I think, I think what I, I hear you saying is that the, um, we've got. Medium and large solar arrays are, we've got the three rows down at the bottom, small, medium, and large.
Yeah.
No, 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 no. And then conditional use site plan review in the new column.
And ski way.
And so, and ski way, yes. Uh, and so that if, if you read across, oh, you read down rural district, it's not allowed. But then if you go up to the solar district, you can say, oh, wait, it is site plan reviewing.
Yeah.
Okay. That's a, I, I think that's a fair interpretation of.
Oh, that's fair, yeah, again, I just, I'm asking the question.
When you define Holt's ledge, okay? That was something else before that.
But there's no underlying or, or, other than.
Yeah, there was no.
It had to be.
There's no contradiction.
There was no district.
Yeah.
There was no district at all.
Well, there was a district there, but it was.
But it took it out of that district.
It took it out of that district and.
Made its own.
So why didn't, why don't we, why can't we do the same thing with solar?
Because.
All the other rules.
The other ones are still there.
About rural and commercial, you want to apply when that's.
But we're not going to take, we're not gonna take away the, the other things that can be done in the solar district.
Well, if, if that can be written up so that that's clear, then that might be worth a lot.
Well, what do you mean, there's already agriculture in that district. There's already, uh, forestry probably, there's single dwellings, et cetera, et cetera. So all of that stuff already exists. So we just copy over everything that doesn't apply to solar.
Right.
As, uh.
As permissible.
From the rural district, as permissible.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Why not?
Well, I'm asking David.
Yeah, David.
Cause you, you encompass both the rural and the commercial district. So you'll have to bring across.
All the things that are rural.
Well, look, if you look at rural district in East Line, they are almost identical.
Right, but that's, I don't care about East Line, I care about rural and commercial, you know?
So these two columns, all of those yeses would have to apply.
And so you have, you know, office building new. Commercial district is, uh, by site plan review and no in the rural district.
Okay, so you're saying we overlap the commercial district as well?
Yes, so now, if you bring that over.
Yeah.
Which one do you use?
So maybe, maybe those are, is it allowed to have? NA, can we have not applicable to say, in the sole, you know, for, uh, uh, government, you know, the, uh, whatever we, whatever we say.
Whatever we want to explain to.
I wanted that too, if we could just put NA instead of yes or no.
Right.
To make it clear that this only applies to this particular.
It only applies to these three cells.
Yeah.
It would say, find another zone.
My suggestion would, let's do that, and pass it by Laura, and let her worry about it.
So, I mean, it's, it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's planned, development, restaurant, retail, there are some disagreements here.
Yeah.
So if we do NA, we can avoid all of that?
So. Right.
All right, so.
And, and NA would go down at the bottom of the page to say.
Right.
These are not applicable to the solar district, look in any, uh, another district.
If you added a footnote, say, we're gonna have to add a footnote for, uh, it used to be one for, uh. That's the, the, um, permits, conditional use permits.
Right.
Uh, there used to be a footnote for that, I'll have to add that footnote back in.
Yep. Okay, so add, add that.
And then add, uh, NA as a footnote, saying not applicable to.
To the solar district.
Right, yep, yep.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah.
All right, so do we, is that clear to everybody? Huh?
No.
Okay.
So where, where, which, which places are NA?
All the way across, and the, and the three rows at the bottom will have the yeses.
Or the site plan.
Yes.
So yeah, every, basically, you add three rows to the bottom of the table for small, medium, and large. Add another column after the Holt's ledge for solar district. Everything down to those three rows will be NA. With a footnote saying not applicable to the solar district.
Right. Oh.
And then, um, SPR slash CU in those three.
Right.
So there, we would not be saying that the boundaries of the solar district trump the others. We're saying that if you are interested in one of these uses, forget about the solar district and just look at the district underlies.
That's a good, a good statement with the inference, yes.
Yep, that's good.
Okay, so who has the language?
I think David just said it.
You have the language?
I, I have enough of it to.
Okay.
Okay. To wing it, too.
All right, so we, we need to really get moving. So, um. We got all the way to, uh, that first number, where was it?
Four, twenty? Fourteen, two?
Okay, yes, so, so we are, we are four, four, four point four, two. We addressed that expeditiously. Then when we get to, um.
Point, four point two?
Four point four, two. Add to section four point four, two.
That, that's the table.
Oh, that's the table.
Okay. So let's go to four point, fourteen point two.
I like her changes.
Well, she says, you define small energy systems only as ground mounted systems, so there should not be any provision for a roof mounted small energy system. I'd suggest a separate section for roof mounted systems. We can.
I don't understand that.
I, I think she's making a good point, but we could ignore it. Really, couldn't we?
Well, then, yeah, and she added in all districts.
Yeah, so because she took it out somewhere.
Well, she took out auto lot and added in all districts.
Yeah.
Wait, we define roof mounted systems.
Yeah, but she's saying that this is small solar energy systems, you define small energy systems only as ground mounted systems.
Okay.
So I think she's right.
Small.
But we'd have to write a whole new section. So.
If you look back to the first page, uh, solar energy system, or, yeah, solar energy system may be further defined as follows, small energy systems. Solar energy system that is ground mounted. So you, in your, I, I actually do think you should change that because, um. You are now saying that under the definition, it has to be ground mounted.
Then why don't we take out ground mounted?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, that's the easiest thing. Wait.
So, because otherwise, the size, you know.
Yep.
If they've got a roof big enough, fine.
Right.
Um, but one of the things that, um, I believe the board discussed earlier on was that. You didn't care if a roof mounted system was over two thousand square feet. And so if you take out ground mounted, now you're gonna say, you're gonna limit absolutely everything to two thousand square feet.
So what, what if, what if we add language here, allowing for?
All right, you could say. A solar energy system, a small solar energy system can be roof mounted or ground mounted. Roof mounted systems are limited only by the size of the roof area. Whereas ground mounted systems must have a cumulative footprint of two thousand square feet or less. The footprint of this area is measured by totaling the land areas, et cetera, et cetera, how about that?
I bet we could cut it down, but I think a small solar, uh, solar energy system that is roof mounted or ground mounted. With a cumulative footprint of two thousand square feet. And then that fixes the fourteen point two. That says if a roof mounted solar energy system modifies the building footprint, then that implies. Otherwise, everything else we've written just applies to ground mounted. So I'm suggesting, um. In page one, A, solar, small solar energy system. Is a solar energy system that is roof mounted or is ground, or is ground mounted with a cumulative footprint.
So you're a solar energy system that may be roof mounted or ground mounted?
No.
No, cause that would.
No, no, he's, he said it right. It can be roof mounted or ground mounted with a, so, so the width is gonna define the ground mounted size. And doesn't necessarily refer to the roof mounted size.
But it's not, um, that modifies the building footprint or height of the structure on which it is mounted. The resulting structure must conform to the mental controls of the line zoning companies.
Sure, I'm happy with that, that.
So that would go into A?
No, that would, that's still part of fourteen point two.
Okay.
So, uh, small system is either roof mounted.
Oh, okay, cause.
And we don't care how big it is.
Right, 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 cause there it's defined, and then it's, it's not a contradiction here.
Yes.
Got it, got it. Okay, so you, you've got that, uh.
Can we say either?
Maybe, a solar energy system that is.
Either ground.
Either roof mounted or ground mounted with a cumulative footprint of two thousand. We wanna be sure, I mean, I, I said it, that it's a solar energy system that is roof mounted or is ground mounted.
Okay.
Because that then pushes ground mounted with a cumulative footprint.
Keeps the clauses clearly divided.
With a cumulative footprint of two thousand square feet or less.
But does that make all roof mounted systems small, no matter how big they are?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm, I'm completely comfortable with that. I mean, if you've got.
All right, but let's just ask, let's, let's put that potato on the fork. That means that if you've got a, a big warehouse, you know, one of these industrial buildings here, and they cover the roof with solar.
Right.
It would otherwise be a, maybe, it's never gonna be large, but it might be medium. We're okay treating that as small, we don't wanna, we don't need anything, we don't need to review it, we don't need to.
We're okay treating that as small, we don't wanna, we don't need anything, we don't need to review it, we don't need to.
I think that's fine, yes.
I think that's consistent with our, our, one of the things that we started at the outset with is if you can put it on a roof, then we're, we don't care.
Okay.
You've disturbed.
You've disturbed. You haven't cut down any trees and, you know, the ecosystem.
And in reality, David, I don't think it's gonna happen for at least thirty years, so.
Well, the, the other issue I will bring up with that is, so you have, you know, a large warehouse, it has a, a system that's a medium size and they are just selling the power. Um, it is a commercial use now.
Yep.
And so now, does that get subject to?
It should be.
Well, the, the whole warehouse is subject to site, site plan review.
It would be, but you don't, not necessarily doing this at the same time.
I'm not gonna worry about it.
No, I think I should.
Why, why would we wanna, why would we wanna regular that?
Because it's a, a commercial use.
It's a change of use.
It's a change of use.
It's a change of use on the property, you know, you have, you, you go from a warehouse or like manufacturing, whatever you wanna have in that warehouse, to add a brand new use to that lot.
But isn't the warehouse already a commercial?
That kicks in.
But, right, but you're, you're adding a, a commercial use to that. If you have a, a warehouse and you add a supermarket to that warehouse, you wanna review that.
Yeah, but this isn't a use that's likely to bring in customers, it's not gonna attract, it's not gonna.
Just.
I am putting it. It's, it's, it's just that.
I think we can kick it down the road, it's gonna be years before.
Alright. I don't know, it just seems to me that if, that in the, in the interests of getting solar built, we ought to say if there's a roof, put solar on it, no matter what size.
So if somebody.
No matter where the electricity's going?
But, so, but what we have here in fourteen two only applies to small solar, solar energy systems. So somebody wants to do a medium and hey, there's no, there's no language for the medium that has to conform to the dimensional controls of the lime zoning ordinance. So I'm gonna make it fifty feet tall.
What?
What do you mean what? There, there's no, the, the, the catch is in the small energy systems, fourteen two, what we're leaving is a, and this is only for small solar energy systems. If a roof mounted SES modifies the building footprint or height, structure which is mounted, this basically says the lime zoning.
That's right.
Ordinance will apply. So the, the implication is that if it's a medium, that it, that those lime zoning, zoning ordinance.
I think though the.
Dimensional controls do not apply.
I think the language that Rich and Matt have come up with though makes by definition, however big it is, if it's on a roof, it's small.
Right, yeah.
Right, that's right, and then.
Okay.
And you don't think we should be reviewing those if they're big buildings?
Why would we wanna review?
Because they're big buildings.
Well, as David was saying, if it's a change of use.
They're already there.
I mean, so, okay, so here, no, so here's, here's an example.
Yeah.
You have a big building.
Yeah.
And somebody comes in and says, I'm putting a, you know, whatever. And there's safety issues.
Uh, so.
Will, will this roof hold it?
Will the.
Well, what, why don't, why wouldn't we review everyone that's on.
No, I mean, so, John, to answer, to, to address that specific question, we're not qualified.
Well, who is?
I mean, first off, the insurance company is gonna ask the person that puts up a whole bunch of stuff and say, did you have an engineer design this?
But there's no.
Yeah?
The, the role, okay, I mean, you know, if you guys, well, you could say that about anything in the C and P or the SPR, you know.
Well, the, the other issue is that the board, it's understood that the board is unqualified and the board can.
Get qualified, exactly.
If you found out with, you know, the, doing the clinical project, the board asked for some outside.
Right, so, I mean, not to have oversight on something like that, I think is irresponsible.
You mean if it was over two thousand square feet?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm gonna move that, that we adopt the language that, that we just said for small solar energy systems, that an energy system that is roof mounted or is ground mounted with cumulative footprint. So that's my motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Sorry, well, I can't say.
Well, I can't, oh, yeah, you're. Okay, is, is, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? Well, we're having, this is, we're having, we're having members vote for this.
Say it one more time. Okay, so the, the definition is a small energy system is a solar energy system that is roof mounted or is ground mounted with a cumulative footprint.
Of?
Of.
Of two thousand square feet and.
Or less.
Or less.
Or less.
Right. Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm not changing the rest of.
So, so it's or less, so it doesn't address anything over two thousand square feet? Right?
Right.
Okay.
So you're just adding roof mounted.
Right, it doesn't address anything over, if it's roof mounted, it could be a.
No.
Not with, not with oversight?
No, that's how Rich is saying it's a solar energy system that is ground mounted or roof mounted, right?
No, you say, you said it backwards, it's gotta be roof mounted first and then or, which I've just learned is a disjunctive. So whatever I put after or only applies to, to the subject of ground mounted. Okay, so the ground mounted has a cumulative footprint, footprint restriction, but the roof mounted is, any roof mounted system is a small system. That's what it's, that's what it says.
As a practical matter, are there any structures in line that have enough roof space to get to be a medium sized system anyways, are we, are we arguing over angels on the head of a day?
Yeah, we're definitely doing that.
Two thousand square feet isn't that big, really?
They work in that against River Looping is probably.
Yeah, but, um, Bert Ryan's.
Crossroads Academy.
Yeah, no, they're, they're. Crossroads Academy.
Okay.
I don't know how big the one is.
Crossroads Academy doesn't have any room on their roofs to put solar, not much anyways.
Oh, they got solar.
No, they, they have solar.
Yeah, we're gonna solar.
Ground mounted system.
Yeah.
Um, the, uh, Wagner Woodlands.
So, okay.
I don't know how big that system.
But a really big barn, an old barn, maybe, like the Tuller Barn or something like that.
Absolutely, I think could.
So.
But it, it does seem to me that anytime you put anything, anytime you mount anything on a roof, there are safety concerns. It's for engineers and the person who's.
It's not, it's not just that safety, there are not to have oversight, to, to carve out something that you don't have oversight on is problematic.
So, but why are you okay with it if it's small?
Because we're the, we're the.
Threshold, the.
What?
Yeah, there has to be a threshold that it, it's okay.
We're, we're saying, you know, as long as it, as it conforms to the, so, okay, so with Rich's definition, we're saying it has, you're saying that no matter how big, it's, it's a small.
Small if it's on a roof.
It's small if it's on a roof.
Yes, that's what I mean.
So if a roof mounted SES modifies the building footprint of the height of the structure, the resulting structure must conform with, to the dimensional controls of lime zoning ordinance.
Right.
So we, we still wouldn't have oversight, but we would, it would have to conform. I mean, it's some oversight, right?
You, you wouldn't have any control on how it is placed on the roof.
Right.
You know, if it's on, you know, very large racks, other than you can't go over thirty five feet.
Right.
Right, well, that's fine. But, but if it was commercial, as you said, it's a change of use, but I guess we don't care about, about either.
Well, I mean, you guess we don't, you know, what does that mean?
Well, if we're gonna.
It's.
I don't, I think, you know, it's kind of moot.
Kind of, except, you know, if it isn't, I mean, you know, I mean, we can look at this again as a, as a one, you, you know, you can change it again next year. It, it's not ideal, but we're, we're up against it, okay, so the, the motion has been made. All voting members, is there, is there a second, you made a second, all in favor?
Do you need to appoint another member?
Yes. I think I know what, how the vote's gonna go. Well, just for a mystery, I'll, I'll, I could appoint you.
How would the vote go?
Yeah, you would vote, yeah, so, alright, so then it's gonna pass, alright, so, I mean, you, you were.
So what would you do?
The motion?
I'm gonna appoint, I'm gonna appoint you because you made the motion, so you're now voting on this.
Alright.
Okay, so, so all those in favor? Uh, go ahead, you got three, alright, I'm, I'm gonna vote against.
I'm voting against it.
Yeah. Okay, so it passed.
So what would you guys wanna do?
I would wanna have more time to, to write.
Well, but we don't have that, I mean.
But it passes, it passes.
I know, but, but, but you're, you're voting against it, so what's your alternative?
Passive aggressive mode. Yeah, it's a passive aggressive.
Why I do it for it was because we had time and we had to do it.
I'm not comfortable with it, I guess is the simplest way of putting it, but I know it's gonna pass, so.
Well, but, so, but you're not comfortable with.
Would you like me to vote for it?
No, well, I want you to know what, what your alternative is.
My alternative would be to spend another hour.
Oh, definitely.
You know, no, I mean.
We're gonna spend the other hour anyway.
We have it till midnight, come on.
I mean, it doesn't matter.
Alright, let's keep, let's keep.
Leave this one behind.
Thank you all.
You have a great point.
Alright.
There's a limit to how much sausage you can watch being.
So now we're down to, you should also require a site plan review, we already added that. Her changes, oh, okay. No, we're on fourteen two D, the combined structures on the lot.
And she added that.
Yeah, and, and David, you and I talked about this and you were comfortable with her changes.
Yep.
Which section are we talking about here?
Fourteen two D.
Yeah.
Okay, and then in the medium and solar, you should also require site plan review, so after conditional use permit and site plan review. And she added maybe principal accessory uses in the rural, commercial, or skiway zoning districts for the medium.
Or, or.
For that, if, if you're keeping track of it, you should add the, in fourth, fourteen three and fourteen four, shall require your site plan review and the conditional use permit.
Well, actually, it has to be in that order, I had.
I don't think the order is.
You can have it and CP.
And it wouldn't be an or, it would be an and.
Yes.
Yes, yes, but her changes.
Is that conjunctive and it's?
Yes.
Conjunctive.
Is there a process that one gets conditional before site or? Because it seems like we should probably put it in the order that they're gonna apply for.
Well, what is the order that you're going to require them to?
I think we, we, we are required to do site plan review, so site plan review, I think would have.
I, I think what you can do is change the site plan review regulations to include solar and the result of approval of the site plan is a conditional use permit. So that, but that would all be done under the site plan review regulations.
Right.
Which is something that the board will change if this passes.
Right.
Then you go back, modify the site plan review regulations to do that, have a public hearing.
And well, we don't need a town vote.
No, you just need a public hearing and a vote.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So site plan, you should go first then.
I would put site plan review first just because.
It's more important, right?
Well, I think it's.
It's required.
It's required, but.
A right chronological order.
You know, the, the idea is that the, the, you're adding the conditional use permit to the site plan review regulations. Um, so it really is, you know, it does require the conditional use permit, but to get that conditional use permit, you have to go through site plan review.
Right, so it should be first.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Alright, so we have fourteen three in the rural, commercial, or skiway zoning districts.
Fourteen four you added skiway, right?
I did.
Okay.
Should require a site plan review.
Right, and then.
And when we're adding the skiway, is it an or?
Yes.
Skiway district.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So with fourteen five, we're starting it with any ground mounted solar energy system, et cetera.
No, we're getting rid of that whole thing.
Fourteen five.
No, fourteen five is done.
We're striking fourteen five.
Oh, we're striking, oh, okay, that was bold notes, okay. Fourteen six.
I would change it to fourteen five.
Yeah, well, right, the new fourteen, yeah, the new fourteen five.
Well, let's just, let's just keep using the numbers that are printed on the page here and we'll.
Well, alright, the current fourteen six, future fourteen five, medium and large solar energy systems require a conditional use permit which may be granted if the following criteria are met.
Right.
Medium solar energy systems are not permitted in a location that requires upgraded utilities on a designated scenic road.
A location or any location?
Any.
She wrote NA.
Any.
Any, any location. Okay, so she took out, are only allowed in the rural, commercial, and skiways.
But that was put back in B. Further up, or further back.
Okay.
So we don't need it, I don't, I just think it's clear to leave it in, but.
We could leave it in.
I mean, brevity's good, but.
The problem when you do that is that then if you, somebody else comes along and makes a change in one of the things and doesn't catch the other one, then you end up with a.
Okay.
Okay, so, so the wording of this B is not right.
It needs to keep large solar energy systems.
What? B?
Well, no, the, yeah, B has to have a, it starts out this district, and you don't know what district it's referring to. So if.
Oh, so we need to put in the solar district.
The large solar energy district comprises.
Yeah.
Yeah. And maybe we say the large solar energy systems are only allowed in the skiway zoning district or the large solar energy district which comprises.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
So, so, say that again.
Large, looking at B, large solar energy systems are only allowed in the skiway zoning district or the large solar energy district.
Which comprises.
So why didn't we define the district in, under definitions? Why do we find ourselves defining the district there?
There was a reason, we tried to do that once and it got mooted.
Yeah, but let's not restructure.
Yeah, let's not, let's just do what Rich Brown just said. So.
What, what did you say?
The large, oh, uh, large solar energy systems are only allowed in the skiway zoning district.
Or.
Or the large solar energy district.
Which, which, which comprises the aerial on Route ten, you got that?
No.
Alright, one more time, this time with feeling.
Okay, the large solar energy systems are only allowed in the skiway zoning district or the large solar energy district.
Which comprises the area on Route ten. So.
Could we have a catch on that she has on, where she has what there, like, what do we intend?
It, it's as measured from the edges of Route ten on either side.
No, large solar energy system must be located within nineteen hundred feet of.
As measured.
Nineteen hundred feet of what?
Well, must be located as measured.
Oh, from the edges as measured.
Yeah, from the, there you go, yeah, so, right, right.
So what is the edge of Route ten? Is that the pavement, edge of pavement? Do you wanna go just to the center line of the road?
Don't wanna put it in the center line.
I would say the edge of the right of way.
Yeah, okay.
It's fifty feet from the center of the.
Well, it is, and it's all over the place.
Well, many places, it's fifty feet.
But, I can tell you any place along that road where that is. I have the original marks from the nineteen sixties.
Really?
Yes, so I can, you can.
I'd like to see this.
Okay, but let's, let's move this in.
Not too long. Yeah, so that, that last sentence should read, um, a large solar arrays must be located.
Large solar energy systems, let's keep it.
Yeah, let's keep it, a large solar energy system must be located.
How about only allowed?
Well, it's the same thing.
Oh, okay, must be, okay, that's fine, okay.
Must be located.
Was that nineteen hundred?
Of.
The right of way of Route ten as measured.
See, the edge of the right of way.
Yeah, the edge of the right of way.
The edge of the right of way.
Of Route ten, full stop.
Well, it's from the edges on either side.
Must be located within nineteen hundred feet of the right of way as measured from the edges of Route ten on either side.
Good for you. That works.
Okay, okay. And that's the man who's gotta get it written down.
The edges of the right of way or the right of way which is bounded by the edge?
I was just gonna use the language that's already.
From the edges. From the edges and, uh, and on either side.
As long as you have edges in there, you're, you're pretty much saying, you know, right.
And you have the right of, the right of way.
Right, you're not saying that the edge of the road, the edge of the pavement, center line, right, edge of the right of way.
Okay, so it's gonna read, uh, large solar energy systems must be located within nineteen hundred feet measured from the edges of Route ten on either side.
No, nineteen hundred feet of the right of way.
Of the right of way.
You just say R O W.
Of the Route ten right of way.
Yeah, of the Route ten right of way.
So what this requires then is.
Wait, wait, let Nat get this down.
Somebody who's up close to Washburn Hill Road then has to survey the properties in between them and their property.
They've gotta show that it's within the measurement.
Okay, so then it's gonna read, uh.
I think, you know, they could come in and ask David, that's not a.
That's irrelevant, the survey, but if they have right now, that's not a problem. Really?
Yeah. Okay, so, so, uh, read that back.
Large solar energy systems must be located within nineteen hundred feet of the Route ten right of way measured from the edges of Route ten on either side.
Is that good?
So, so I, I, I just don't understand how they're gonna do that, because you have something that you can say, yeah, it's, it's here, but how do they find where that?
Probably.
They have to physically find that property line.
Oh, they're gonna have a surveyor in there anyway to set up all their, where they're putting everything.
Yeah, but, well, yeah, but when they come here to see us for an application, we're gonna say, oh, you're two thousand feet away, or you're nineteen hundred and forty feet away, um, chop it back.
Well, that's how it works.
And it's.
We have to have a measurement.
And I do this all the time, I, I have to tell applicants that it, you know, with your project, it's up to you to prove to me that it meets the requirements. It's not up to me to make that determination.
You can give them guidance.
Here's the guidance, you need to make this within nineteen hundred feet of the edge of the right of way.
And, and if they're at fifteen hundred feet, are you in a position to say you're fine? Or would you still?
I mean, that's just sort of a procedural question.
I mean, if they, then again, it's gonna be up to the board, not me.
Yeah.
Don't mean to pass the buck, but it's yours now.
You should, yes.
But, that would be the board's decision to look at that and say, well, this is clearly within that, you know, we're, we're, you know, the, the, the district in this area goes up past Washburn Hill and you're on the west side of Washburn Hill completely, so yes, you're within that, and.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Right, if you can, if you can see it from observation, then.
Okay, let's, let's go, thank you. Yeah, this is taking a little bit of time. Alright, so are we keeping the, um, medium and large solar energy systems, Mark said that this is doable.
Yeah, but he did suggest.
He said, will be supplied to properties in line.
Yeah, so it reads then, um, at least sixty percent of the power generated by each solar energy system will be supplied.
To properties.
Per contractual arrangement.
Oh.
At properties in line.
I thought we just said supply. Okay.
He's, he suggested per contractual arrangement.
Okay.
So to or at properties.
Two.
Two.
I guess.
Alright, and then it's in the F. She takes out shall be required at the end of the sentence.
Do we, do we need to add the skiway district to any of these little clauses we got here at the end of this section? To F or to, to C or?
No, I don't think we, I don't think we wanna apply that to C, to the ski, to the skiway.
I presume they're gonna use it at the skiway, so.
Yeah, so I don't think we have to.
Yeah.
What about the setback requirement, do we wanna? I mean, we don't wanna give them a pass on putting stuff right up against the road, do we?
No, but there, there would be.
It's a large solar system.
They would be using medium or large. So, I don't think we have to specify the district.
Oh, I, I see, that's right, you're right, you're right.
Okay.
Did we get rid of the net metered part?
No.
In fourteen six?
Fourteen six.
Where in fourteen six?
We didn't get very first sentence.
The first sentence in fourteen six.
Oh, fourteen six.
We should.
Yeah.
What, where is this?
It says. Yeah, yeah, we, we got rid of that.
We did.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you're just making sure.
We, we got rid of and, and group net meters, so.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
You know?
Yeah, okay.
Access eggshells anxiety.
Alright, we're on, so we, you take out the shall be required at the end of F. You got that?
Yeah, well, that's already there.
Okay, and then, um, all, in, in H, all proposed power and communication lines.
And in G, there was a, um.
Yeah, what are we gonna do about G?
I have a proposal.
Yeah.
A large solar energy system may not be located on a site which has an area of over an acre that has been clear cut within the prior five years before submission of a complete site plan application.
I don't know that it changes that, but yeah, it's more specific.
So, I guess, I was under the maybe false impression that I, I think I misspoke to Ross.
Yeah, I, I didn't understand what you were saying.
I was under the impression that somebody goes, you know, we were trying to keep, because we can't control, uh, clear cuts, that somebody would just go and say, okay, I'm gonna do this my own way, I'm gonna go clear cut my land, then I'm gonna come in for an application.
Right, but they have to wait five years.
Well.
The way we have it now.
The way we have it now, but I think.
Five years.
Yeah, but I think, I think that, I agree that clear cutting for a solar panel is fine, I don't agree that somebody can go and clear cut their land and predetermine where that site is gonna be and say, well, so you want me to cut another five acres because you don't like this?
But they can cut it anyway, they can do that anyway.
I'll interject here.
Yeah.
We have an initial threshold question. I mean, are we gonna decide this based on what we think is a good, you know, what we think is the, the best plan? Or are we gonna decide it based on the input we got on the survey?
Well, that, we, we went by what the input was.
Yeah, so the input on the survey is overwhelmingly, people don't want. I mean, and so, I mean, all the people who said, well, that's a stupid idea, why are you paying attention to that?
Right.
Well.
Because we.
Because we're trying to function in a democratic way.
I'm, I'm gonna, I did not get book, chapter, and verse on this because I heard two people from the public express this. This would be a bad idea, Mark Bolinger said it would be a bad idea. If we need a fig leaf, I have some data here to say that in the, the.
So, Rich, you're, you, you wanna decide this based on what you think is a good rule as opposed to what input we got back on the survey?
And, and to say, we didn't do a very good job of explaining this, I think a lot, a lot of people are love our forests, and forests are important, there's habitat, there's recreation, there's all that, but Lime has thirty thousand acres of forest. This comes from the Conservation Commission's report from about a decade ago. If we have a handful of three or five acre cuts, it is not gonna make a difference.
Look, Dan, I, 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 I think this is a stupid rule.
Okay.
If I were the czar of Lime, I wouldn't have this rule, but I'm not the czar of Lime, and neither are you, and we put out a survey and we got overwhelming public input that said we don't want to see land clear cut to build solar arrays, and so, as a, as a sort of.
Facility.
A representative body trying to implement democratic will, I think our job is not to come up with what we think is the good rule, it's to implement what people told us, and, and what they told us is, we don't want this. And they might be wrong, and you might be able to explain to them in another, uh, next year why they're wrong and then we oughta change this, but.
But meanwhile, we cover that, you know, this is the way, this is the way they want it.
This was the vote.
Yeah, it's a lot of, because I think, well, I think when people answered, answered this questionnaire, they didn't know all the things that we know, you know.
Well, of course not.
So it is, it is hard.
Would, would my wording perhaps though?
It doesn't make much of a difference.
So you're opening in the, in the door, because then during the site plan review, we can get, we can get input from people and they can say, no, we told you once, listen to us, we don't want anything cut, or.
But in the site plan review, you're, you're still constrained by, I mean, it's not like you can have this rule and I go to site plan review and say you don't have this rule.
So let me, let me see if I understand your proposal, that if you clear cut it and then two months from now come in and say I wanna put solar, forget it.
Forget it.
But if you come in with a plan that says, in order to do this, I gotta clear cut.
Five acres.
Five, four, five acres.
Yeah.
And that's part of a plan that it would be considered as a, a proper.
It would be in proper order, and then it's up to the board and the public input received at the time.
I, I think.
If we wrote, John, if we wrote the rule the way Rich has suggested.
Yeah.
Then, then that rule would be consistent.
Okay, then let's do it.
With the, with the idea that if we looked at the site and said, you know, hell, nobody's gonna be able to see this.
Okay, so what's your, so give them your language.
So the second sentence where it says, uh, clear cut within the prior five years before submission of a completed site plan. Is, what is it, site plan review application?
Yeah, we site plan review application.
David, how does his work with special exception?
The only problem is that it's, it's open, this potential for distrust between the planning board and people. Somebody's gonna read this and say, oh, well, okay, it's just saying that I can, that you can clear cut.
Alright, so, so give them your language.
We can't, we can't build anything then, we can't build it in the fields, cause they're all ag. So if you're not gonna clear cut, where, where are you gonna put them?
What if we wrote in the special exception, did we write it as a special exception?
I'm just kidding.
Why is it that we can't build them in the field?
You know what, just, at this point, just go for it or don't. I'm gonna make a motion for people to decide.
Okay.
So, either vote for it or don't.
Read, read your vote for what?
Okay, my proposed language is a large solar energy system may not be located on a site which has an area, area of over an acre that has been clear cut within the prior five years before submission of a complete site plan. Application.
I really don't get the substantive dis- difference.
The difference is that you could put in a plan and then cut it afterwards.
Exactly.
Yeah, which would eliminate somebody cutting something.
Okay, got it, okay. So, I'd like to make.
I think that's a great idea, but I'm voting against it, cause I think that's just absolutely clearly not what people asked us to do in the survey.
If you read between the lines of the survey.
No, that's.
Okay, so, so.
They don't want, they don't want land clear cut to, to put solar on, and, and this is a, this, this creates a, a, um, loophole in that, yeah, for sure.
It's a problem.
Alright, so what do people wanna do, let's, let.
I think we have a motion.
We have a motion.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, uh, all those in favor of Rich's?
I have no idea.
I agree, I would say yes.
I agree with David and I agree with Rich.
Well.
I mean, it.
I agree with David, but, so it's up to you, Tim.
See, now, there's so few places that it's gonna go in.
Rich, Brown doesn't have a vote.
Oh, you do, John just designated.
I designate you.
Oh, you did, okay.
I mean, I could designate you.
No, it's okay.
Alright, folks, let.
I'm gonna, I'll vote for it.
Okay, so it passes. Alright, so, um, in fourteen.
Alright, so wait, what, 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 do I have to re, write this down?
Yes, you do.
Alright.
There's so much ag land.
So basically, it's just adding prior to submission.
Of a complete site plan.
Within the prior five years.
Yeah, that's already there.
Okay. So you got that?
Yeah.
Alright.
And then, uh, Nat, just as a, a typographic error, uh, there's two words not in that first sentence of that, of G, it should say, it should be not be located.
Right. May not be located. And H is all proposed power and communication. You got that? You got G and H?
We had a comment from the public, from Lynn Brown, if you wanna turn and look.
What, what's the comment?
I voted no, clear cut did not appreciate the implications of this position, I doubt that I'm alone.
Okay, well, it didn't, it, it, uh, it was altered to a less, uh, a less restrictive.
Less restrictive, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, what about the up to interconnection with the grid, or you bring that in?
Which, which one is that?
Buried lines.
All proposed power and communication lines.
Which, which, which.
I don't have any numbers on it, but it's.
Oh, it's H, I think.
H. And you have all proposed power and communication lines shall be buried underground.
Up to the point of interconnection with the grid.
Yeah, but, but he, he's, he said there's a problem with grid components.
Well.
Alright, yeah, so grid, grid components, I think is.
Yeah. So, uh, once again, I guess I would ask the board to be clear on, um, if, if this is being made because it's not a big expense to the, uh, to the applicant. Does anybody have an idea what the expense is? I mean, is it five thousand dollars, is it?
To bury cables?
To bury the power lines, yeah.
How, it depends on how deep they have to be buried, but I don't think they have to be, two and a half feet, two feet, yes, so it's gonna be.
So it's the most, it could be the most of a thousandth feet approximately, is that the most?
It's gonna be about. It could be, you know, it won't be nineteen hundred feet, because.
Well, it's, it's, it's within a thousand feet of three feet, that's what Beth said.
Right, I mean, so you're right, it's gonna be about a thousand feet.
Yeah, it's not so, it's not that big a deal.
Yeah.
That's gonna be about ten thousand dollars.
Ten bucks a foot?
No, did I, no, no, it's gonna be less than that, it's gonna be half of that, it's gonna be about five thousand. Let's see, I'm just trying to think of what I did, I buried a cable at two and a half feet up my driveway, and I think it was five hundred.
Is this, is this, um, fiber optic cable?
Yeah, I think it was.
You're, you're talking two different, uh.
This is very.
Same depth.
Same depth, but you're talking about, uh, three phase power.
Yeah, we just have bigger conduit.
But what I don't know is if you have to have, um, three separate conduits for each phase. I don't know, um, I'm trying to.
Oh, you mean they have to be buried a certain distance of arc?
Yep, yep.
I think you can, I think you can put conduit, the conduit wills, will prevent the arcing. Um, I think that's the only issue.
Yeah, that's, I don't.
So, so, so we're.
So I think it's like ten thousand, ten thousand dollars, that's, I think that's what it costs.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I buried three, I think four inch conduits, two feet, and went six hundred feet and it was less than ten grand.
Was it like six grand?
I don't know.
Yeah, if you ran a backup to get yourself, which is easy.
Well, I didn't, I.
No, but if you do, then you just, then you just have somebody come.
So I think. But you've also got the reliability, I think that's what Ross was trying to say, is that, you know, you've got reliability if you've got it buried as opposed. In addition to the aesthetics.
And, and, you know, frankly, I can't remember seeing a lot of cables at any of these areas.
Right, I mean, the fact is, you know, if somebody built a house up there, they'd have to have a pole line going up to their house, and we wouldn't think twice about it.
Well, they wouldn't have to, right?
What's that?
They wouldn't have to.
Well, I mean, if your house is like, oh, you'd have to have holes every like two hundred feet, I think.
Well, we just approved a whole house that were burying them in a steep zone.
Yeah. I don't know, personally, I think power lines are one of the ugliest things we have in the world, I mean, then plus it would have to be three phase, right?
Well, I mean, three phase, they're, they're all, they're extra, funny, those triangular hangers, you know.
Well, there's a whole extra thing, it's three phase, extra bar.
They wouldn't have to be, no, um, they can hang them, I don't have a picture of it, but.
Yeah, let's let it go, and then if it's a problem, then start stopping projects, come and visit us.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going up to the point of interconnection with grid components, right? Okay, that's fine. So the next thing is fourteen seven. Applications for conditional use permits shall be the same as that is for the site plan reviewed, except that submission plans for traffic impact or accepting system. May be waived by the land.
I think that's a good.
Yeah, I've seen one. Instead of may not be required, may be waived.
Yeah, okay, fourteen seven, and then fourteen E.
So she's adding all large solar energy systems and associated equipment must be removed once the system has been out of use for twelve consecutive months.
Okay.
And then the applicant shall submit a decommissioning plan to the planning board as part of the application for a conditional use permit. This plan shall include.
She took out, took it sure.
Yeah, cause she's.
Yeah.
She already said that.
Yeah.
Alright.
That brings us right around to.
So we're done?
Yeah.
Alright, let, let's, let's just, we'll put a, put a fork in it.
Just all I need is a motion and a, a vote.
Alright, I'd like to make a motion, um, to, to do this.
Send it to a, um, second public hearing on a date that you decide.
Well, what is that date?
That's what you need to decide.
Well.
When, when does that have to be? Anytime after, um.
We can't do it at our next meeting?
No, you need sixteen days between.
Okay.
So.
Why don't we just move our next meeting?
Yeah, well, let's move our meeting to the sixteen days.
Saturday the twenty seventh.
Perfect.
That's fine, what's happening?
Saturday.
Who's gonna take minutes?
What about the, the following Thursday?
Um, that would be February first.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's still within the.
Okay, February first, that'd be great.
And then we have a hearing after that, or that is.
That is the day that you're here, and these changes, either you vote to. You know, talk to, you know, public comment on the changes and then, uh, if the board is happy. Even with a public comment.
Always happy.
Then you vote to send it to a meeting or you vote to.
Make. Change that trip. Change that trip. Let's get a priority straight here. Dude, I have a question.
That would be.
Yeah, just a second.
Okay. What you think, dude?
Alright, so did we, did we vote?
Oh, you moved.
Alright, move.
You know, I'm gonna be gone too on February first.
Alright, how about, how about, uh, February, well, um, January, what?
Thirty first.
What's that, Friday?
It's a Wednesday.
When are you leaving?
A Wednesday?
I'm leaving, I'm leaving like the thirty first.
Oh, it's the day before, yeah, alright, so January thirty first.
He's leaving, I think.
How about Ja- January thirtieth?
I can do that.
Oh, now you're really stressing me.
I could be the. Well, no, I couldn't either anyways, I gotta, I'm driving out of Louisiana, politician, sorry.
So.
But I don't matter.
Well, it, it doesn't matter, do you still have a quorum?
Yeah.
As long as you have, uh.
Vicky might be here.
Yeah, alright.
Can't guarantee Vicky, I just, you know, cause I haven't talked to her.
Yeah, okay.
So. So Rich and Evie and.
I would be here February first.
Okay, let's just do February first.
I'll be here February first.
Okay.
You can zoom in from Mexico. Dave, my question was, can you, do we have to do anything about senior housing? Do we have to have a warrant to take that out?
Yeah, you have to have a warrant.
That's already been, that's all sad.
I'm allowed to put in a footnote into the zoning that says, basically that the, um. Legislature had passed an article. Because that doesn't change anything in the zoning, it's just a footnote to say, hey.
Poison pill swallowed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so that's on the war.
Yeah, but can we go back to finish this vote, please?
Let's do the vote, all those in favor.
Need a second? I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
This is for Ja, uh, February first, seven o'clock. I approve it.
Yeah, alright, okay, alright.
So it's all, so we have to be part of the board or something?
Well, the only problem is that I don't really know.
You would need to have a, a documented article.
Are you gonna do that?
Comment correction.
Not in this one at a time.
So we wouldn't even.
So we're not gonna take out.